Okay, so I would like to call the June 23 regular meeting to order at 7:05 if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the agenda. We are not taking anything off, nor are we adding anything. We have one packed meeting tonight. We're going to get through this, guys. We are going to do this, right? Everybody smiles. Thumbs up. Would you?
Yes, I actually did want to move LM and N, so public participation and points of interest come before executive session.
Okay. We could do that. Let's see, if you want to make a motion.
I would make a motion that we that we do that.
Does we need a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, then let's do the roll call vote. So Madhu.
I.
Jacob?
I.
Rini?
I.
Sophia?
I.
Tony?
I.
I as well.
Recording in progress.
Oh, oh, uh-oh.
It's the Russians.
Well, just Lisa, just so you know, Madhu made the motion and Sophia seconded, just so you have that prepared. So I'm an I as well. So let's move the public participation and points of information prior to and then we will enter into executive order. But we are not adding anything and moving anything else.
M before L.
Yes, before L. Okay, so approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion for the improvements of the June 9.
You're in Duschen House, I moved.
What do you all second?
Hey, any discussion? Does anyone have anything that they would like to make different on there? No? Okay, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote. So Madhu?
I.
Jacob?
I'm staying.
Rini?
I.
Sophia?
I.
Tony?
I.
I'm an I as well, therefore motion, the approval of minutes for the June 9 is approved as is. Okay, let's move on to public participation. At this time, we would welcome the public to have two minutes. We have Tony, the timer, who will give you the visual and vocal 30 seconds. If you could, please list your name and your address for Lisa, and you get two minutes. At this time, you can raise your blue hand. Call is star nine, I believe. Get everything mixed up with, you know, meetings anytime and this and that. So at this point, Liz.
Hi, everyone. Happy summer. I, number one, I would like to commend Talon High School, as well as Dr. Will and the entire team and the board for putting on an incredible end of the year, especially graduation. I would encourage you all to find $10,000 or whatever it costs to do that in the future because it was very well received by my friend group, senior parent friend group. It was very well received, so I would say that. And secondly, as COVID has introduced the Zoom meeting content, I would encourage you, I know the Board of, I mean, the Town Council was considering that last night, but I would encourage you to figure out how to do that in the future as you saw so much more engagement from and participation from the public. So I would encourage you to try to find that opportunity as well. Thank you. Happy summer.
Thank you, Liz. Anyone else at this time? Colleen?
Hey, Ashley. Hi, Colleen. You took 12 Blueberry Hill. You took it from me, but I went to listen to the Town Council meeting last night. I hope that the Board of Ed considers to, I believe they're thinking about doing the hybrid version of it, and I just hope that the Board of Education would continue down the same path. So it gives more people, parents, elderly and others be able to have a chance and opportunity to stay and pay attention to local government. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. At this time, any other members of the public? If not, okay, we will move on to correspondence, so that will go to Tony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We received an email from concerned parents about the negative effects of wearing masks on school children. This parent was asking for mask wearing to be a choice rather than a mandate. We received two additional emails asking to remove the mask wearing mandate. Removed, received, my apologies, an email asking for application on policy meeting cancellations. We received an email asking for information on the SR3 grant. An email advocating for continuing virtual or hybrid meetings. The author stressed higher participation rates since the virtual meetings began. Email asking that virtual meetings continue in perpetuity. And an email strongly recommending that the Board adopt an optional mask policy rather than a required policy. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Tony. At this time, let's move on to points of information. Don't mind if I lose my voice tonight because it seems to be all over the place, but I did want to say that I did send a email to Tammy in regards to the COVID fund, and I had C.C. DeWalt on there as well, Dr. Willett, and what ended up happening is she just had a couple of further questions, which he just put on our agenda from the 525th, I want to say, meeting with all additional information. And so at this point in time, they will get that onto their agenda so that we can move forward with the COVID relief extension. So, and also, since Plort is not here, she didn't want me to mention that she received everyone's emails about the masks, and she has that on the communications agenda. So that was a note that she had sent to me. Okay, let's go down the list. So Tony?
No, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to offer my absolute heartfelt congratulations and thanks to the district, the staff, the parents, the students. This past week and a half, I had the opportunity to participate and attend the high school graduation, the eighth grade program and the creative preschool program there at the high school. And, you know, each one of them was absolutely amazing to see the look in all of the students' eyes, the program, how it was put together was nothing short of heartwarming. So from my own personal perspective, I want to thank everybody involved in making sure that that happened and that those kids were able to experience and be there. Thank you all.
Thank you, Tony. Let's go to Madhu.
So thank you. I just wanted to say, I don't know if she's on or not, but to Alexandra Costa, I loved her speech. I know it was literally the last thing that she wanted to do, but I thought she did a great job. You know, and congrats to her and to Simmer. I don't know if she's here either, but I'm very excited to see what your future holds for you. And congratulations to the class of 2021. And thank you to the district and staff for a successful year, given the circumstances.
Okay, thank you, Madhu. Let's go to Jacob. Jacob, you are muted.
All right. Yeah, I'll just echo what Madhu said about the speeches. I think all the speeches are very good, other than my college graduation commitments. I'm not even kidding about that. Also, I want to say, I, after reading the minutes from the last meeting, which I was unable to make, I really liked, you know, what the Communications Committee is going to do with letter for the masks, and I hope they get something into that. I think that's a good way for us to advocate for some of the parents that we've been hearing from as we hopefully move past the worst of COVID. So that's it.
Thank you, Jacob. Let's go to Sophia.
I just want to echo what both Madhu and Tony had said about the graduation and end of year celebrations. I can only imagine the coordination and effort it took to put everything into place, and it looked spectacular and perfect. So I'm just appreciative of everyone. Thank you.
And you loved your Jumbo Tron seat.
That was terrible, and I'm still not living that down, and I think all of you planned it. Convinced.
It's tough.
Perfect. Dr. Will, did you have anything to add?
No, just being on the Jumbotron was more me than I ever wanted to see. That's for sure. That thing, that's big. But no, I think, I think Board members did a fantastic job. The high school worked, the high school staff worked really hard. Alexandra's just speech was amazing, as was the other ones, and I just think it was a really fantastic event. Thanks to the students, thanks to the staff, and thanks to parent guardians for everything that they did this year to help make things work. So it was just a really great, great situation.
No, it was great. I mean, just seeing the smiles at the high school graduation, once they got their diplomas and, you know, everyone celebrating in the stands, it really was quite an experience. And in the eighth grade, it was fantastic, too, with their ceremony where they're coming down. I mean, I was sitting kind of where they were very nervous about getting their names called. So I'm sure that as they progressed through, Tony got to see them with their smiles in their eyes with their masks on, and I think that's important. So Sophia?
I just wanted to tell Rini that we definitely missed her.
Absolutely.
So, hey, Dr. Will, you have people in the waiting room. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so let's go to student representative report, whether it's Alexandra, Summer, or Natalie, or Emily. Who do we have? Any, anyone?
Hi, it's Alexandra. I'm driving home, but I just want to say thank you for all the comments about this speech, and then I thought the graduation was really good. So thank you to everyone for making that possible. And then I've had a really good time being in Board of Ed rep for the past two years, so I just want to say thank you for that, too. But otherwise, I have nothing really official to report on.
Thank you very much for that, Alexandra. I think everyone enjoyed the speech, especially when you sat there and you just said, "I don't want to do a speech. This is the last thing I want to do." It was quite perfect. So thank you very much for everything, and I do wish you very well for the future, and I'm sure you're going to go places. And so you'll have to keep in touch and let us know what you're up to. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Willett, let's go to you. Let's start off with the H1, the end of the year, phase three reconciliation, June.
All right, so I'm gonna just share a screen to do a quick, quick talk on it. It is included in the board packet as well. So just taking a quick look at this and hold on, I want to move the participant screen over here, so I don't miss anyone. Okay, so essentially, this is the third, you know, we, third month of the end of year reconciliation document. It is phase three, you know, phase one, April, phase two, May, phase three is the end, June. And there'll be a post, post closure budget when we get through and we do close out everything. Because as we end the year and end fiscal year, incomparances and expenses sometimes run through August, and we do a final accounting at the end of August and early September. So some of these things, again, the big, you know, there's always an asterisk in there, so just note that the numbers are subject to change as we draw to the end of year close. But it just tries to give the Board a picture of how things are playing out as we, as we get closer and closer to the end. So you're familiar with the first page, which kind of summarizes the budgets, you know, the budget, how it came to be, where it is with respect to Town Council adjustment and so on. And that's pretty much what section one is and has been. Section two, you know, current estimated balance, this had some items, you know, and it was been, has been adjusted as we moved through the months. So you can see that the balance as of the 14th of June, plus the 91, 95 that came in from the town with respect to COVID, was about 295. Now, we're also working with transportation because there are some things that we feel that, you know, and again, for our students, great company, they've been working great with us. We feel some things, you know, that could be, could be brought back into our budget this year. So we're looking at maybe 300,000 that's going to come back into our budget for transportation. Our excess cost payment came, it's about 220,000, so that came back in. And then the TIS concrete work is still yet to go out. So assuming these things are going in and out, and again, you know, if I went to run the budget again today, we'd have a different balance. But as of the publication of the report, this is where we were with some of these adjustments. So you're looking at about 786. Section three talks about expenditures. Remember that section three is essentially expenditures that you don't necessarily offset next year's budget with. Section four is investments that do typically in some manner or form offset next year's budget. So what remains of these from the last two phase documents from April and May are the math bridges, the THS project, which is the scoreboard, the skylift, and the curriculum work is still being expended at this time. So you'll notice that there are still about 91,000 of these items that we had talked about that is remaining to be taken out, which is in the process of being expended as we get towards the end of the year. And as you know, the fiscal year here ends on the 30th. So, you know, there's still about a week of these to get pushed through the budget. Section four, this is harder to determine exactly where we're at because there's so many items in here. But knowing that at the end of this, these investments are going to offset fiscal year '22, as was the design and as we have talked about in the past. So this is really just an update that, you know, here are these items, and we're in the process of incurring them as per the last board meeting where you approved these and we moved through that. So again, that's the 474 offsetting next year's budget. And if you go back to section one, sorry to give people vertigo, that's the 474 we need to find between, you know, what we, what we're looking for and what we were allocated. So that, that's bridging that, and we're still in the process of doing that. Sections three and four together are about 565. Section six means that if you subtract what we had from what we are allocating here in sections three and four, you get about 220,000 remaining, and that 220,000 would be split as per the plan that we've had in the past, 50/50, 50% to the educational reserve fund and 50% requested to go into the COVID fund. If we ended on the 14th with those numbers, this is where your allocation would be 110 to the ERF and 110 to the COVID fund. Now, there was a conversation of FFC, so I created a section eight. That conversation in FFC was basically that because we're not sure, you know, and in the previous meeting there, I had a, I had an agenda item on the coronavirus relief fund that the town had set up. Because we're not sure of the future of that, you know, between June and September, as Madam Chair had talked about here a few minutes ago, there's going to be a conversation, whether that, you know, that fund continues. So if that fund does not continue, then the, the conversation in the FFC was that, that instead of the 50%, you know, 50/50 split, that instead 100% would go to the ERF. So there's a potential proposed motion for action tonight, if you should wish to move this to action. And that motion would be that in the event that the town of Talon's education COVID relief fund is discontinued, any funds, the BOE requested to be rolled into the fund from fiscal year '21 will instead be rolled into the educational reserve fund. So by making that motion, even if we do do the 50/50 split here, and that's the intention, and I would communicate that intention over to our colleagues at the town side, it has that caveat now. If you do make that motion, that should that fund be discontinued, instead of the 50/50, the request would be that it goes entirely into the 1%, to the extent that ordinance, you know, chapter eight ordinance 86 allows it, which is up to 1%, which is about 400,000. So hopefully that kind of makes sense, but that was the one thing that the FFC wanted to see adjusted, was that if, you know, in the event that does not continue, that the ability for us to move those funds instead to ERF is articulated.
That was a lot of information, and you went over it quite quickly.
I'm just saying.
You're like, we have a lot.
I'm trying to put it out there quick.
You're like, I have my evaluation stuff tonight.
There it is.
So it's not at 10 o'clock.
Don't want people too tired.
So let's go ahead and go to Jacob.
All right. Well, first, again, a big thank you for Dr. Will for doing all this work. You know, the past couple of months of budget stuff is crazy. For the transportation reimbursement, a reimbursement at $300,000, I know we talked a bit about that in FFC. That's not confirmed yet, correct? Is that still an estimate?
Yeah, it's still an estimate. Could be a little higher than that, could be upward of 400,000. I could also have gotten it wrong, and it might be less than that, but I'm thinking it's going to be in that range.
I'm really comfortable with that number. Okay.
Yeah.
And then I guess the only other question I have is with the 50/50 split, do you feel that that's a pretty reasonable allocation at this point? I know that was brought up a while ago, so I didn't know if anything had changed.
I do. I think that the, if the coronavirus fund does continue, too, the, the good thing about it is that if it is unused, it rolls to your ERF. So should that continue to be in existence in the form that it is now, you really, you know, the Board doesn't lose anything from putting it in there because if it's not utilized, it rolls back. So long as it doesn't account for more than 1%. So it's a, it's a really great agreement that the town and the Board had. It's very functional, and I, there would be no reason not to under those conditions.
Okay. All right. Yeah, the one thing that we had talked about a bit was just the flexibility of it. So as long as that's good, you know, and I do think that this motion is wise, then I'm fine with it.
Hey, Tony?
Yeah, just a quick question in relation to this motion. So if this motion was to fail and the COVID relief, the fund was not continued, what would happen to that other 50%?
Well, currently, right now, the, the Board voted on this, basically, if I can get it into one screen, that I would be communicating to the town at the end of this fiscal year in a communication that, you know, the end of year balance be split 50/50. And the beauty of doing the percentage split is because then you can communicate that really almost the day after the fiscal year closes because it will be a percentage. Now, the thing about it is if there is no COVID fund for that to go into, then it will probably roll to the town. So because there's, it doesn't exist, so it will just roll to the town. So it would go to ERF at 50%, the other 50 would end up going to the general ledger, probably.
Thank you, Dr. Will.
Rini?
So I'm just wondering, do we need to move this to the action if we want to have this motion?
Yes, I, I mean, at this time, I would definitely entertain a, a motion to add the end of the year, phase three, June reconciliation, proposal to K5.
Okay, so I would like to propose that motion without maybe necessarily repeating the whole thing.
Well, we just have to move it.
You're moving it, then, then you repeat it later tonight.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Build up to that.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's do the roll call vote. So Tony?
I.
Rini?
I.
Jacob?
I.
Sophia?
I.
Madhu?
I.
And Plort has joined us, so.
I will be an I as well.
Okay, and I, so therefore, we will move this the end of the year, phase three, June to the board action. So at this time, Dr. Willett, let's move on to H2, the early release ER days for the 2021 through 2022 school year.
So I, I've been working with the administration and with the school system staff. And as we end this year and finish the pandemic year, and hopefully next year, you know, education is, as usual, you know, is coming back. What we noticed is that, you know, we, we do have an increased need for tracking. We have a greatly increased need for data analysis and for tracking of populations. We have a lot of student populations that, you know, we've identified as, you know, having had an effect in the pandemic and that, you know, those tracking on whether, you know, whether it's assessments like, you know, Dibbles and Dorf and Days, which are more reading and language arts, or, you know, scholastic inventory, which is more math, things like that, or NWA. These are all things we use to progress monitor students. And we have teams that we call data teams. These data teams need to meet on a regular basis to be able to analyze the data and identify student populations that are struggling and also looking at our interventions. That's why it's called progress monitoring because you take a look at how your interventions are working, and if they aren't working, you switch up and use different methods and strategies. And if they are working, you continue them, but you continue to progress monitor. You continue to, you know, provide these snapshots and these, you know, these collections of data, and then you analyze data in the teams. We need more time for this. We are, we're not going to be in a very good place to be able to execute what we need to execute this year with respect to the initiatives we have in the data team meetings that we have to have. We need to have at least, and typically, we want to have twice a month. You want to have these meetings come about every two weeks. And you want to be able to have the time for these groups to have, to be able to really parse through all of the data, and there is a lot of data. So in order to really do that effectively, especially now, the pandemic has really raised our need to do that much more frequently. So our big initiatives for the coming year are, you know, Portrait of a Graduate, Understanding by Design and Transfer Goals, things like that, social emotional learning, the Yale and Ruler Program, it will be implemented. And the third big thing is our data analysis and our teams that are, you know, needing to review the progress monitoring. So right now, the proposal, after talking with the staff and the admin, and it is a ubiquitous feeling, is that we need five more early release days to accomplish this. What I did was I took the, and early release days have other benefits. They, they generally are felt to, you know, provide students with, you know, some social emotional benefits and so on. But, you know, really, our, our driving need is that we know we're going to have a really, really, you know, we're going to have some circumstances this year that we haven't faced before. And, you know, if we don't have frequent analysis of the data, then it'll be a longer period of time, and we may not catch as many, you know, as many evolving challenges as we would otherwise catch if we had more frequent reviews. So if you take a look at this calendar, the blue items are the added early release days. There are five added days, October 6th, January 12th, February 2nd, May 4th, and June 1st. And you can see that what that gives us is every, about every two weeks, and, you know, some of these months were really broken up. So December, for instance, we didn't want to throw two in there when you were already having a December break. November, we didn't want to throw two in there when you're already having that break. But most of these months now will have at least, at least one, and some will have two, you know, reviews of the data. And that's, it's an extremely important thing for us to be doing right now, coming out of the pandemic. Otherwise, you know, one of these stretches of time would have been from, you know, if you look at the calendar, the way it was set up, if the last data team was, say, on the 8th of December, and we weren't able to do the next one until, say, you know, February 16th, that is a long span of time. And, you know, if there are students that are showing a downward trend, you know, as a group and a population, you know, we really need to be able to see that as a, you know, as an aggregate group and, and put attention to it and pull kids into different programmatic supports or offer push-ins for those, you know, those same students. So in order to be as responsive as we need to be next year, we're going to need to have more frequent reviews than we would have otherwise, you know, maybe needed in a typical year, which is why over this past few years, we were able to kind of back off a little bit. We really, it is a universal feeling that these are needed among the staff, among the administration, and among the staff that we've asked and are working on it with us. So, so that's really the long and short of it. You know, there are other benefits, but that's the driving force for us right now.
Okay, let's go ahead and go to board members. So just scroll down a little bit because I'm just trying to.
We'll just try to get it on one screen if I can. It'll be small, but you can kind of see.
Well, I'm just trying to see, because I have that you're adding, you would like to add, I should say, October, January, February, May. I'm missing something. Oh, June.
June. June 1st.
Okay. One, two, three. Okay, so let's go to board members. So Tony?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Dr. Will, I guess where my question is, you know, throughout this, this whole thing, we've talked about, you know, the critical need to get the kids, you know, back into classes and to make sure that we're making up for any of the slips that happened during COVID. And I can see what you're saying from a data perspective. I'm looking for, though, I'm looking for though, is when the existing schedule, uh, was brought before the board and approved, it had certain early release, release days in it. And, uh, then a, a get out of school day, uh, was, was set. So now that we're recommending, or you're, you're recommending adding these additional, what is it, five? Is in there, uh, are you adjusting when the kids will then get out of school? Or are we just?
No, that stays the same in terms of, um, we don't adjust the last day of school, no.
Right, but they, what my question is, sir, is the classroom time. We're just, we're, we're saying that that number of hours that would be distributed, that would be taken away to go to these early release days is not necessary?
No, I just think that, um, you know, everything is a cost benefit. So, um, what, what we would, what we're doing here without them, you know, with the, the seven or, you know, so that we had is we're flying blind. In a year that, that follows a pandemic, um, in those early release days, they would still touch, you know, they'd still have time with their students, it'd still touch base. But then they would be able to, um, you know, they'd be able to more clearly see as aggregate, you know, populations where these, these kids are trending and which ones are having the hardest time. Otherwise, um, that's not as easy to do for us. And it would be something that, you know, after this particular year of, uh, of, you know, the actually 15 months really, year and, year and, year and some. You know, that the trade-off of those minutes on those Wednesdays will greatly be recovered by our ability to be much more responsive with respect to identification of students who are struggling and falling, you know, maybe into some holes with respect to, you know, to, um, you know, to, to knowledge and grade level knowledge. So, you know, that's, that's the, the issue is that if we're not able to do it on a, on, uh, you know, almost, uh, well, if we're not able to do it on a, a more regular basis than what was originally put here, we're going to miss the, um, ability to be responsive. And we need to be very responsive in this coming year. You know, so it's, it's, it, it's something that, uh, you know, the, the calendar was developed a long, long before we really had a good idea of, um, of what some of the dynamics were going to be of even this year we're in. And I think, you know, it's not a couple of people. This was something that, uh, people felt, felt very strongly about with respect to time, is that we really are going to need to be able to, to be responsive. And that's, you know, essentially why. Originally, there were more days asked for, so five is fewer than what was originally being, um, put out there. And so we put to the board three to five, but when I had meetings today, for instance, it became very apparent that, um, five was really needed because we, we planned and scoped out every single thing we were doing this year and every single day we had to do it. And we noticed pretty big holes without those five days, um, just not enough regular analysis. So, you know, given the circumstances, so, uh, the, the time that you lose, um, in those Wednesdays is made up by the ability to be more responsive, um, you know, to those populations that are needing it. And, 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 uh, you know, it, it also has a benefit in terms of, a lot of the students seem to feel that there was a social emotional benefit of that, having that time too. That was just something that had been shared anecdotally with us.
Let's go to, um, Madhu.
Uh, thank you. So I guess, you know, my concern is the effect on working families, you know? I mean, after the past year, you know, we've, you know, we've already had, you know, home days, you know, half days. My concern is, I, I understand why we want to do this. You know, the concern that I have is, i- is the effect that it, that this, that an additional five days throughout the year, like what that would have on working families. Is this something that we're going to be asking or that we're going to be doing every ensuing year? Or are we saying that this is necessary because of the pandemic that we just went through? And, you know, it's, it's kind of like a, a one-time deal?
Well, I think it's, I think it's particularly necessary because of the pandemic we went through. That's, that's what I've gotten from the last meetings. Are traditionally in this district, we've swung a little back and forth on this. You know, one year we had something like 14, the next year we had 11, then we had, you know, this year, we ended up having about seven and, um, I don't, I, you know, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't say how, you know, say 23, 24 would look. But I, I will say that, you know, we would be looking at where the district is at that point and making a request on days that mirrors what we feel is needed at that time. And what is being felt is needed at this time is, um, more than what was originally thought. And, and that's the best way I can answer that. I don't think there's an intention to go to every Wednesday, for instance. I mean, I think there are some districts that do that. I don't think this district will ever be one of them. But, um, but there, there's going to be a fluctuation from year to year. So maybe next year they would ask for 11 instead of seven, you know, but not 13 or 12, you know, 14 that we had in some years. Um, and we'll, and I think that the request should be made based on logistically what needs to be pulled off, you know, what needs to be executed from, um, you know, from these teams and, and, uh, and what obstacles may be in the way for doing that otherwise. So if we can't accomplish it this way, then sometimes what happens is when there's a need to do some of this, subs are brought in and teachers are taken out of class to do it. You know, so if, if it's not being executed in an early release day and we need to compile data in order to identify students for the next S R B I or R T I round, or say what's called response to intervention round for students who need it. State of Connecticut requires it for general ed populations. Then we're going to have to pull substitutes so the teachers can do that versus having them do it on an E R day. So it's not like there's no trade-off, you're just not seeing it. It may not be happening in an early release day, but the kids aren't getting the benefit of that teacher for that time because they're going to have a sub because that data has to be compiled. So this kind of prevents the, you know, it, it's a more, it's a way of doing it more predictably and systemically. It's, you know, again, to answer it, um, no, I, I think we would be, you know, this would be based on what we need for this, you know, the year following this pandemic. And we would be looking in the future to what, you know, what would need to happen beyond that. It may not be as many, it may be 10, and maybe, maybe eight, you know? But, and it's in the fast, it has been as many as 14. We'll never be asking for every Wednesday, um, I don't believe. And, you know, at this point, uh, this is really just to be responsive.
I, I mean, I, 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 I get that you guys wouldn't be asking for this i- if you didn't need that. You know, again, my, my, my concern is, you know, there's going to be working families out there, you know, that literally have to take off like, you know, five half-days, you know? It's, it's just tops, that's all.
Yeah, no, no, I, I respect that. And, and again, I only come to you with this request because there, you know, it's been pretty clear that as we look over everything, uh, there, there's a need. So the, you know, the least I can do.
Do they feel it's necessary?
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and I would be remiss to not try. If I, if I knew that we had this and I didn't try, that, that would be kind of abdicating my responsibility to, to try to, you know, make it, to adapt to a, to a changing situation.
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand. I mean, it, it's, it, it sounds like it's, it's in the best interest of the kids. I get it. I get it. I'm, I'm just not happy about it, you know, that's all. So I'm sorry, done.
I just had a quick question. Um, I know this calendar's come out and there's a lot of discussion beforehand. Um, is there a reason why January didn't have any dates? Pre-planned here? It looked like we have, we didn't have one in January. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, I think it was just coming off the December holiday originally and then noticing that you've got the mid semester day. I've been in, in service in there already. People were just avoiding January because it follows the big holiday of December, you know, the December break, school break, and then it's followed by a mid semester day. So I think they were just avoiding that, you know, that being going, you know, going right to something. But, um, but again, that was before, um, you know, before we started to collect, you know, able, we're having the benefit of collecting the information we have now. And I think there's just a feeling that now we need to put some things in.
Yeah, let's continue on with our board members and see, um, well, let's, okay, so Reni.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Um, so I just want to throw in, my understanding is the kids benefit the most from time in front of the teacher. We have lost so much time this year and towards the end of last year with the kids with the teachers. I could never in good conscience vote towards more of that. Maybe three days, I might be able to get myself to the three days. No, five, no. We did, you know, half-days every Wednesday and, you know, the comments about the wasted Wednesdays and stuff is just, it's, it's painful. I just don't feel like more time away from the teachers is beneficial for the kids. I understand that there's a need to, you know, look through data and so forth, but I just feel like we need to find another way. And I, I struggle with a, a day on June 1st when the kids are getting out two weeks later. What are you really going to be doing with that information? I don't know. But, I, I mean, that's just my position. And I just am having a difficult time with, after everything that's been said about how far behind the kids are, after everything that's gone on, that we're now talking about more time away from the teaching staff, it's just hard for me to imagine that this is really the best for the students. But I understand there's different perspectives, but I'm just throwing out mine. So, thank you.
Thank you, Reni. Um, let's go to Plor.
Thank you, Ashley. Uh, Dr. Willett, you actually answered my question. I was going to ask, um, could you help the board understand what happens, uh, if the calendar stays as is? And it sounds like, you know, teachers would be pulled from the classrooms if needed to look at data or whatever it is they would need to do and, and potentially subs moving in. I guess, you know, I see both sides. I, I see, you know, why the time is needed, but I also see what Madhu said with, um, you know, potentially the working families struggling with this, as well as what Reni said, most importantly, you know, keeping the students in front, you know, boots on the ground in front of the teacher. So I guess I wouldn't have a problem with, you know, if the teacher knows that they are going to need to be pulled out of class and there's a sub there, you know, I have the utmost confidence that they're going to give work or give something that the sub could potentially implement, you know, in his or her absence. So I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards a no, and I don't want that to be taken the wrong way by anyone. I just, uh, I think the kids need to be in school.
It's just the logistics. It's, it's lost every time they have to do that. It's, it's organization time that does take away from classroom effectiveness. So it, it really isn't, uh, even handoff. It, it does impact the organization from the standpoint of the amount of work and time that has to be put into doing that kind of thing. And again, we're blind without being able to do the data team pieces. Those populations are not as obvious to us. A child might go for, you know, a number of weeks before being identified as needing, you know, needing the, uh, you know, the additional supports. And it's not as clear, um, as one might think without being able to do this review process. So it's not like there won't be a cost to this. If we don't have these days, there will not be as many kids identified soon enough. And they will go many more weeks before, um, before getting the identification and the help. So it's, it's not an even trade-off. It's not like there isn't a price to that. There is. The price will be that the most marginalized kids, the ones struggling the most, will not be as quickly seen as needing it and will not, the, you know, they will not be able to respond to that need. And it'll go many weeks maybe before, um, you know, before they'll, they can adjust, at least from.
You know, hold that thought for a second because we do have eight of them. So that's pretty much once a month minus June and January. So we still have one per month, which is so you have at least still, what, every four weeks you have a review?
Yeah.
You know, that's not.
It's not enough for this year. And that's what, that's what the profession, you know, that's what they're feeling. Uh, and if you, you know, some of these, like, they do go and spend quite a few weeks, from say, December to February is quite a few weeks. And so that's the, that's the problem is, it's just given, you know, what people are seeing. You know, I also want to say that the staffs worked really hard. They worked on priority standards. They've seen amazing, uh, results from some of the efforts they're making. But again, they, you know, in order to know what's working and, and to know what isn't working, they need the time to be able to, to, to disaggregating and, you know, do that work with the data. And because they, you know, and when they can, they're able to adapt and do more of what works and less of what doesn't. But if you go many, you know, going four weeks is a bit long in, under the circumstances. So it's, it's, I understand, definitely understand. It's just, uh, trying to be responsive to the, you know, the situation on the ground that we have. But, um, no, I get it.
On with Sophia, because she didn't get a chance to talk yet, and she has her hand up.
Thank you. I guess, um, my confusion or lack of understanding is, aren't we always collecting, uh, data of this nature? I would imagine last year, or perhaps even this year, might be different because there are anomalies due to the pandemic. But in previous years, say 2019, weren't we collecting the same kind of data? And did we have this many half-days? I'm just curious as to why there's more or why it's, it, it's, I'm not understanding what the increase is, if, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, it's just that there are more kids who will need it and that there's more need to be. There's a fear right now of not having it more frequently because there are more children in, in that situation. And we have had more in the past, in some years, we've had 14 of these days. So, you know, we've definitely had more of these. You know, it is, there's only a fixed amount of time and we can only bring these teams together. And it does not work with wraparound time. So it's not like we can say in the, you know, in the 30 minutes you have left of this day, get together as a group. It, it doesn't work. So, um, you know, it's important that they, they have the full block of time to do it and, and it doesn't really exist elsewhere in the, you know, in the process. We don't, we don't have as many days as some districts do. We do actually have quite a, quite a bit more time than some districts do. And so even with this adjustment, it's just that there is a feeling, you know, there's a fear of not having these be more frequent and, um, you know, them not being able to review and respond. You know, four weeks, it'll be too long, you know, under the circumstances, coming off a pandemic with more people needing it than did in the past. More people to look at, more data to compile, more kids to, to review.
So there's probably more children that are going to be identified as needing, um, services more now than there were in the past.
Well, though, let's, you know, what will hopefully be the case is that we can do this under what's called tier one or tier two of R T I, which is general education. If we can't do that, then there may be more kids that need special education farther down the line. So yes, there would be more kids that needed our attention under the general education, S R B I, R T I sort of umbrella. Because of coming off the pandemic, there's just more that didn't get to points that they need to, and there may be some vulnerabilities for them. If we can address those effectively this year, we can avoid potentially having kids need special education, kids falling behind. If we can't do that, or for whatever reason, where, you know, we can only get to X number and not Y number, then we have a potential for carrying this problem on for years, this challenge on for years, and potentially increasing our designations to special education, which has a lot of complexities when that happens. So, um, you know, this understandably, no, you know, there are adjustments and people would have a hard time making them, you know, it makes sense that there would be some feeling of discomfort with respect to saying adding days. But again, we're not as many as some other places. These days are not a total instructional loss at all, especially when you consider the research on how long the attention span of students are and what recommended class lengths are. A lot of our class lengths will be the recommended length of time, even with the half-day in terms of student acquisition of knowledge and the amount of time that a child has as an attention span. So from an educational pedago, you know, pedagogical instructional design standpoint, those half-days are not wasted or lost days in terms of student learning. They're restructured days in terms of how we can be responsive. The biggest thing is there, they can be a headache for families, which is understood. But there, there should not be a lot, a learning loss because we had the shortened periods, um, on Wednesdays. It's actually going to address more of that because we'll be able to do a better job of identification and S R B I, R T I, tier one and tier two responding to the general ed population needs.
Okay, um, Sophia, are you all set?
I, I am all set. I, I mean, I just wanted to say, I do understand, um, the need for these extra days. And I like Reni's idea perhaps of three days of splitting the difference. I just think, um, for the mental health of our children, they do better when they're in school consistently. So this one's a definite tough call.
I completely agree, and that's what actually I was going to say, Sophia, is, you know, we can go around again, because I see like Tony and Madhu have their hands up. Dr. Willett, I don't feel that you're going to get five days out of this group. Um, I don't think that that's going to be an option. So to me, I think if we're going to start talking about this, um, maybe we can get some people to. So to me, I think if we're going to start talking about this, um, maybe we can get some people to come over for three days. Like Sophia was saying, Rini, you know, three days option. I mean, maybe even two days because you already got the eight. So I, um, that's kind of how I'm feeling right now, taking the the Zoom room temperature. I just, you're not getting five.
I mean, I'll still ask for five because that's what my staff is asking. You know, they they wanted seven, so I'm still going to ask for five. But whatever the board, you know, wants to do is understandable for me. But I that that's.
Yeah. No, I get that, but I think, you know, we can go around, you know, and talk maybe about like the two or three additional days, um, since we have the eight and see what people feel. And then we can go from there and see if we can move something to a motion or if, um, it just kind of is going to just kind of die. So, um, let's go ahead to Tony.
Uh, your your segue was wonderful, Madam Chair, and I guess the question is more towards you. I'm looking to see what we're hoping to get out of this, uh, out of today's discussion. I mean, we've got some policy thirteen sixty, uh, which talks about the school calendar, says that the school calendar has to be reviewed by the board twice, you know, two regular readings after being reviewed by the policy committee. Uh, and not last year, but the year before, uh, this board showed that that applied even to modifications to the, uh, to the school calendar, uh, where changes went before the policy committee and then had were reviewed twice. Uh, so I guess my question is, is this being brought to the board as information? Or are we looking to then take the approved idea presented to the policy committee and then to the, uh, two readings of the board?
Well, this is, um, this is an action. This is not an action item. It's a superintendent item, so it is not under action right now. On the fourteenth, it could be because of the two read. One thing I would suggest is you you're still under a pandemic response condition. So us being able to know what we're doing as we get into July is helpful from an organizational standpoint of execution. So that's why, you know, I think it makes sense if you want to do two, but, um, but that the sooner we know this, the more effectively we can, you know, do what we need to do in terms of, uh, you know, in terms of the planning for it.
I completely recognize that. I I just, uh, if need be, and if that's the the direction of the board, I mean, we could always call an a a special meeting of the policy committee. I just, even under the pandemic response conditions that we've been in for the past year, uh, we're still held by board policy.
Right, but I I don't think you'd be explicitly violating it. But what I would suggest is this, um, also just a couple of other comments on it. Social emotional learning, you know, one of the biggest struggles was when we were not in school at all or there were entire days missed. So there's actually some literature that talks about how doing this modification of a schedule can have social emotional benefits because the kids, um, they do have more time to connect in other ways that in a typical school year they won't. And most kids feel overwhelmed.
What I, I, you know, that my my question is not posed to the validity of the days or or the need of the days. My question is more towards the procedure and how we take your recommendation and apply it within existing board policies.
Yeah, so it's under H now, and you you know, you can either choose to move it or not, but you can make that, uh, the July fourteenth item if you wanted to for the second read.
But it would need to go before the policy committee before the first, I'm reading thirteen.
I would respectfully suggest that the modification like this isn't such a, you know, could be handled in a board meeting, but whatever, uh, whatever is the feeling of the board on it is fine with me. I think, uh, the original adoption is is the is the big push on that. Making modifications in the summer, you know, if you want to have an extra policy meeting between the two times to review the calendar alone, that's fine with me. For me, I'll do whatever is needed here, um, whatever makes, uh, whatever makes people feel more comfortable with process. But, um, you know, for me, in terms of the pandemic response, you know, we've, uh, we we're kind of like on the ground in a very difficult situation, um, with a lot of circumstances we're trying to be responsive to. So these kinds of things, you know, this meeting today, again, originally, this this was seven, you know, coming back for seven more. This was in a conversation respectfully changed to three to five, which makes sense in that, you know, people are feeling that. So that was the request. But, um, you know, the having these be known to us as soon as possible will make us be able to do a better job for the children. So however we want to accomplish that, I'm totally fine with. I was just more responding to the more broad sense. I think Sophia had asked or Masha was asking about sort of social emotional impact. There is literature to suggest that having days like this actually has a social emotional benefit. Uh, and to the end of having the structure, whatever structure you would like to have happen here is fine. I'm just reporting out on the need.
Completely agree. I I would just, I would caution us as to to win, uh, splitting hairs becomes necessary. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have very few hairs to splits, whatever you need. There's not much left up here, so.
Uh, thank you, Tony. Uh, let's go to Madhu.
Thank you. Um, I I did have a a another question. Was there, was this the consensus of the administrators of all the schools? Or were there some schools that were wanting more, some schools that were wanting less? Or was was five or, I guess you were saying seven, you know, was that the general consensus of all the schools?
Just came out of a meeting a few hours ago where this was the, what I'm showing you here was the consensus of the entire administrative group. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Again, I, you know, I respect the feelings around it too. I just, I'm bringing it to you because I feel like it really is something.
No, you know, like, and I I I get the need for the five days. I, you know, I I do get it, you know, because I mean, when you're a kid and you're struggling and you're drowning, you know, there's no worse feeling. And and I don't want, I don't want a child to feel like that, you know, I I just. But I I do agree with, you know, what people have said where, you know, it's, I I still think they do better while they're in school. You know, I I I hate to struggle on working families, but, you know, I I I understand that. And it does seem like it's in the best interest of the kids to have it. I I but like a lot of you, I'm just not at the five days point, you know, I may be more of a three to four kind of person, but that's it.
Thank you, Madhu. Rini?
Just as a last quick comment, I think it's it's hard to balance the information that says, well, from a social emotional standpoint, the kids could benefit from the break, but yet all year long we've heard they're in a bad place from not being in school. It seems like a, you know, opposite type of set of situations and information. So I I struggle with that as well. It's it's hard to know, well, which one is accurate. So I'm just saying that that's another thing. And I I'm definitely on the less and more time in school is better. I feel like it's particularly at this point after so much time out of school.
I I I respect that. I think the difference is that when we were talking about that, that was when they were not in at all. They were not in on Wednesdays, period. It's the entire day they were missing. And when we talk about over the pandemic, these models of having Wednesdays, um, these are not unique to Talent. They are utilized across the state of Connecticut, some more than us. And so the point is whether you're in a pandemic or not, there is a benefit to having an early release day on Wednesdays, regardless of pandemic, because there are many things that can be accomplished with that. So take the pandemic out of it. We are kind of muddying the waters with a a juxtaposition of evenness with this because they are not even. A day, a day where we weren't in school during a pandemic, where we had to make all kinds of adjustments on time to, you know, to make sure that people weren't, um, you know, getting COVID. That is quite a different dynamic than early release days during your your typical year. And they are very effective, um, when used appropriately, uh, for helping children and moving progress forward. And even social emotional benefits when they're put that into place during a typical year, which is what we'll have next year, unless something radically changes. So it's not an equivalence to to suggest that we have, it's missed school because those days were not, they were not in school. They were remote, um, and they were necessitated for a number of reasons. And again, thinking, you know, Talent actually had more in school days for more of our kids than most districts in Connecticut. But regardless, um, even then, it was a day of not being there at all. And this is being there, um, in a traditional model like it would have been applied in a non pandemic year. And there are benefits to that regardless, you know. So, um, it's just, you know, it's just, uh, again, put out for your your edification. And I and I have to fight for it, as you know, because, you know, that's part of my job is to kind of fight for what I think is going to be needed here.
So what I will say to you, Dr. Will, is that it sounds as though that we can maybe get two or three days. I don't think anyone will be going for the full five days addition to the eight that we already have. So I don't know if you want to pick like a couple of days, especially like January where you don't have one, and then maybe somewhere else that the most beneficial that you can have, because I mean, in June, it kind of seems silly to have one of the, when kids are getting out of school for the last couple of weeks. You know, it really think about those additional days and then maybe bring it to the, uh, policy. Because, you know, Mr. Policy over there wants to ensure that they have a review before the board moves on to that. And that gives you a time to really crunch down and figure out what days would make the most sense.
So if, um, if there's a way of kind of giving me a sense of, um, you know, what what might be acceptable the next time we bring it around, um, that can facilitate the, um, you know, the process a bit. So if there's three, uh, then it's, then I know that I can go for, you know, I can work with the team while I have them here, um, as a group, uh, to look at that. Um, if there's four, same thing.
I don't think we're getting to the four, Dr. Will. I think we're in the two to three range.
Would you, I I it broke up a little bit. Were you saying five? It was breaking up.
Was that five?
Five? Oh, it's seven? I thought it was seven, you just, you were saying.
Well, they already have the eight, so.
So unless there's something wrong with my mic, I was hearing, I was hearing seven.
That's what I I getting the feel from the the room itself. So I would, um, advise to be closer to that two to three days versus the five on there. I think that also it kind of takes people back. I know that you said that, you know, things change, you don't know. And that, but when you're planning the calendar, I mean, you do have the input from the admins, from the teachers, just to figure out what makes sense. As though, so to come back again to request for, I mean, it just kind of, like I said, I mean, January would make sense to have one. I don't know, like you said, why there, why there was, because you come out from December, you know, and I get it. But I do think that, um, once the calendar is out there, it is also harder to modify and throw in some more half days or no school days, especially after we're coming out from where we are with our students, need to be in front of teachers. And honestly, if there are other days and they have to get subs, um, then at least the students are still in school as much as that situation stinks. But at least they're still getting some educational learning being done at school in front of a teacher, sub or not sub. So I would say, like I said, um, I would pick out, uh, two or three days. And then you could bring that to policy for Tony, um, for his review, because it seems as though we have to have them review the policy. And so if he can have a special session, so we can try to get that on for a motion, um, on the fourteenth meeting. I think that would be the best plan of attack.
Okay, so I, uh, if if I may, I'm, I will try to do three days if I could and then, um, move forward from there for policy.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay, so let's go to committee and liaison reports. Um, Tony, did you want to start with policy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As as you're aware, a policy committee met today at at six and, uh, attempted dutifully to stay within our one hour purview. Uh, we we began the meeting, uh, slightly off agenda by just reviewing and having a very brief discussion on, uh, why the mask policy, uh, was tabled and why it was, uh, remaining on, it had not come back onto the agenda, was remaining on there. We talked about the fact that the mask issue, for lack of a better term, was going to be taken up by the communications, uh, committee for a discussion. Uh, we then moved on to thirty ten, um, which as you're aware, is is budgeting and discusses line items and those kind of transfers. Uh, we went over any of the changes between our existing policy and the recommended policies from shipment in Goodwin. Uh, we then had a series of discussion topics, uh, that have been provided by Ms. Griffin and the FFC. Uh, we went over those, uh, discussed those. That that took up the entire meeting, so that draft has is is going to be posted to the policy, uh, folder for review and, uh, will most likely show up on the next meeting for further discussion.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um, I saw the agenda for curriculum committee, so that's that until next time. Uh, Rini? Anything with the negotiations? I think you were just reported last time it was the same. Okay, and how about you ladies, communications? Next, next Monday?
That's next Monday at three. Uh, and I, the only thing on the agenda is just talking about, uh, the state guidelines with masking and and advocacy from the board. You know, just getting the discussion started.
Okay, perfect. Jacob, anything for the mental health or anything of that nature?
Yeah, um, not a whole lot. Um, we had a good discussion with, uh, resident state trooper, uh, Eklund, it's Monday. And it looks like the task force is going to try to subsidize work and have a specific focus upon, um, students and, uh, the youth in the community as well as adults. So, um, I think that'll help us focus in upon, um, specific problems, uh, facing school aged children. I had a quick question though for Tony. When you said that it's, uh, thirty ten is going to be on the next meeting, did you mean the next regular Board of Ed meeting? Or is policy gonna pick it up in their next meeting?
Policy, the next policy meeting, my apologies. Get through enough of the conversation to be able to recommend, uh, FDA, so it'll be discussed.
Well, okay, all right, that's it.
Okay, perfect. Um, we don't have Dana for a Birch Grove. Am I forgetting anyone at this time? Anyone? No? Okay. Uh, let's move on to chairperson's report. Honestly, I just really wanted to congratulate all the seniors. I think it was really just a wonderful experience going to the Dunkin' Donuts perk. And like I said, seeing the smiles once they get their diplomas and having that, it was really a wonderful experience. Even with the eighth graders when they came, like I said, I sat there and they were so nervous with their names being called, but then they went. So honestly, I just really want to make sure that all of our teachers, students, admins, everyone has a relaxing summer and actually try to have a little bit non-COVID related fun. And just really, you know, come back refreshed, come back, you know, just everything, I think everyone needs a break. I think everyone's been just cooped up in their houses. Everybody needs some fresh air. And so I think, you know, the fall is going to be another great year, so that's all I really have for that. So we can go on to the board action, which is, we'll start off with the K one.
Okay, so, um, so K one, if you, just take a quick look, obsolete surplus equipment. We do from time to time have obsolete and surquests equipment we have to, um, you know, move through. The administration typically makes this request under Board of Education Policy thirty forty, disposal of obsolete surplus, um, materials and equipment. It's listed here under board action. The proposed motion would be motion declare the below items as obsolete and turn the items over to the town in accordance with that said policy. And, um, and then the town, you know, decides what it can and can't glean from the standpoint of whether it has value anymore or not. If anybody has a burning desire for a Panasonic VCR player from nineteen eighty-one, uh, you know, you can ask the town about that. They might take some of your funds to give you that. But, uh, most of these things are, you know, are not really usable anymore. They're on the list because they just aren't functioning super well or, you know, or or not usable or not practical. Laser discs were, and, uh, again, like twenty, thirty years ago. So it's, um, it's stuff that you typically can't, you can't, you know, sell or do anything with. But the town then does decide how it wants to manage it.
Big laser disc that would come in and you'd be all fancy meanwhile, you know, then you get the little discs after, but yeah.
That's right. You were huge technology a long time ago. That and Betamax and, uh, what else? Couple other things.
You do?
So I actually had a laser disc player back in the, uh, late, late eighties, early nineties, and it was amazing back then. But, um, it is, it is awesome, as I think as we have a VCR. It just kind of brings me back to town council meeting last night. I know they were talking about, um, equipment to, you know, possibly, you know, you know, get a room ready for, you know, possible hybrid meetings. Was just wondering if there's anything that, you know, maybe we could provide to the town, um, to help them, to help them, uh, you know, achieve those goals or, um, anything like that.
A lot of great desks going on.
They can equip it with an eighties genre with some of. They can equip it with an eighties genre with some of these items. Um, if they wish, and then kind of Guardians of the Galaxy sort of thematic.
But hey, we give it to them and they can pick through and if there's something like they could use, they can go ahead and go for it, right?
That's right. They, they get to decide ultimately what, what they do with it. And actually, sometimes when there's steel and things they can uh sell, you know, they could do that.
Repurpose, okay. Okay, I was just wondering if there's anything in here that, you know, was still working back, you know, could help uh, you know, do this. Yeah, that was it.
Okay, uh this time I'll entertain a motion to declare the below items as obsolete and turn the items over to the town in accordance with the Board of Education Policy thirty forty.
Madhu Redhushantala, so moved. Uh, motion to clear the below items is obsolete and turn the items over to the town in accordance with Board of Education Policy thirty forty.
Jacob Mari second.
Any further discussion on this, guys? Okay, we will do a roll call vote. So Madhu.
Hi.
Rini?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
Plor?
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
I'm a I as well, therefore motion passes unanimously. Now the town can have some wonderful products here. We'll go forward. So let's go to K two, the Birch Grove Primary School Change Order.
So I think Katie is uh, or uh, Ms. Murray has joined us tonight. Um, you've seen these before. And uh, they've done, they do a great job of helping summarize and, and um, you know, uh, provide summary information for us. So I, I'm not going to belabor it here. I think uh, you know, the, the expert on it would be Ms. Murray. So I, I will yield the floor or Madam Chair, if you want to yield the floor to any questions for, for her. Um, again, this is following what we have been doing in the past with these change orders. They are listed here. We do put them in the uh, you know, in the drive so they can be accessed by anyone who has the agenda. You can uh, on the internet access any of these change orders and the information. Um, and I'll here, I'll pull it up. So you can see that they, they come up and you can investigate each, uh, each of the um, specific listings here, um, if you need to. And so I'll, I'll, if it's okay, yield the floor to Ms. Murray for any questions or anything that.
Yeah, well, we can um, I can intervene the motion and then we can have that discussion if there's any further questions and now we can have Katie respond to that. So I will entertain a motion here. Um.
Jacob Mari, I move to accept documenta- documentation relating to project one forty-two dash zero three dash N state change orders numbers two, three, four, five, and six, presented in the Board of Education Meeting of June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. And authorize the superintendent to sign all related documentation and approvals to apply for reimbursement from the state for eligible items. It's a long one.
Madhu Redhushantala, second.
Okay, so now this is uh, our discussion. Um, I see Katie, Katie?
Yes, um, I think this is my fault, so I apologize. Um, but uh, we'd also like you to include change order number one in there. Uh, to approve them, numbers one through six. Um, and that's my fault. I'm sorry, I forgot to include that when I sent the note to Dr. Will.
I guess you have to rescind the motion.
Have to rescind that. Um, what about the seven and eight? So seven, I'm just reading through here. Um, seven, the board of admin was submitted to the contractors. Okay, so that doesn't have, this is a command or is a change order. Okay, so that is just one through six. So we will just need to rescind.
I probably should have cut that too, Katie, so sorry.
Um, can I, Chris, do we need a vote to take it off the table?
You need to take a vote to take it off the table.
Okay.
So you didn't make the motion.
Um, I can move to rescind the motion that I made.
Uh, well, second.
Yep.
Okay, any discussion? Let's do the roll call vote. So Jacob?
I.
Tony?
Hi.
Madhu?
Hi.
Rini?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
Plor?
Hi.
My I as well, therefore that motion is now rescinded. So now we can entertain a motion with uh, the one through six.
Right, Jacob Mari, uh, I move to accept documentation related to project one forty-two dash zero, zero, eight, three, dash N state change orders numbers one, two, three, four, five, and six, presented in the Board of Education Meeting of June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. And authorize the superintendent to sign all related documentation and approvals to apply for reimbursement from the state for eligible items.
Do you reduce to tell us second?
Okay, so back to the discussion and I will go to Tony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got two questions. One is uh, on the appropriateness of adding number one. Uh, the, the item summary on agenda might have two specifically says two through six. Can we in the middle of the meeting add an additional item to that?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I don't, I think you're, it may be just depending on the way you're look, looking at it, you're correcting. We're correcting, because if you look in supporting materials, there is a change order one in there. Um, so it looks more like there was a omission, and yeah, a typo and omission to the, to the motion. And we, these board action desire, the motions are, are put out there to help the board make the motion. You know, usually I'll add those, so.
Doctor Will, it go up uh, on that? I'm, I'm not talking the board action. I'm talking the item summary. Uh, paragraph one. No, talk, paragraph two says, there's two through six for submission to the state of Connecticut.
So Katie, do you wanna?
Yeah, this was, again, I apologize. Um, I think this, I was a little confused uh about what I was asking Dr. Will to include in the agenda. Um, but Dr. Will is correct. Change orders one through six have been provided for your consideration. And that, that is what is included in terms of documentation.
Yeah, I guess I just looked, uh, Madam Chair or Dr. Whether that, I'd look for clarification as to whether we can uh, add that, and especially this late, after approving the agenda initially, if we can add items to it.
Yeah, and so I guess the, it would all be in whether we feel like what was, what is happening here is an addition to the agenda or a correction of um, of the, of the uh, action item.
See, I look at it as a correction of the action item, because we had numbers two through six and we have to add in one, which the general sequence does list a number one. And we do have the link for number one as well for the change order that was sent. So I would say it would just be an update.
And I guess I would also defer to Ms. Murray, does that, does that cover what's needed with respect to the change order, Ms. Murray? If it's one through six?
Yes.
Okay, that's in the spirit and the intention of what it should be. Okay.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, I'm good.
Uh, Jacob?
Yeah, um, so forgive me, Ms. Murray. This is a stupid question, but is this kind of, I mean, this is just because the state needs this too? Did we see these again? Because I was just reading through this. It says we need to resubmit them. Um, is this just kind of more of a bureaucratic thing, for lack of a better term? Um, some of these do seem familiar.
Yes, you, you've already seen uh, two, three, and four. Uh, number one is unsuitable soil. Uh, five and six reflect uh, change order. Uh, a number of change order requests that have already been approved by the building committee, um, but you haven't seen yet. And yes, um, for lack of a better description, I believe that it, this was a bureaucratic uh, process that we've been asked to go through uh, to ensure that the change orders are in the correct format. So when uh, they are considered for eligible for reimbursement, they are in the format that the state wants them in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, let's go to Plor.
I was just wondering, is, I guess I just assumed when I was reading through, because we have the supporting materials for one through six. But the, the board action just was missing the number one. But Katie, uh, you just said, the, has the, I guess my question is, has the building committee reviewed change order number one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other further questions? Nope. Okay, then we will do a roll call vote on this. Um, let's start with Plor.
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
Tony?
Nay.
Madhu?
Hi.
Rini?
I'm just wondering if the motion says two through six, do we need to have it say one through six before I vote?
I think, we, we sent it in, Jacob didn't make.
We did do the one through six. Okay, then I, yes.
Uh, Sophia?
Hi.
Okay, um, I as well, therefore the motion passes for the change orders. So thank you very much, Katie, for coming and answering any questions that we've had.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's go to the field and grounds agreement.
So the, the field and grounds agreement currently um, has kind of an annual review. It's been reviewed and looked at by the town staff and the board staff. Um, and it is also in process, I know of going at, at some point in the near future. And I, I wasn't able to see on the agendas whether it had actually made it on there at this point. Um, but both board and town council review this. Um, there's no real anticipation uh, that this is going to fail. The, the major change in this particular situation for fields and grounds this year is that um, there would be a three-year, uh, three-year agreement. Um, so the FFC did go through it and look at it. Um, you know, the questions came up about the turf field, but that language is still that the board and the town will work it out. Um, and the biggest change here is really that it would be a three-year term. Um, we can also either party revisit it at any time. So even if it is have a three-year term, it just means that, you know, with that oh, clause that allows us to reopen it and revisit it anytime. If the town or the board has something pressing that it really needs to be looked at, it can be opened up for the purpose of addressing that issue. So for instance, Birch Grove is going to be an entirely new facility with an entirely new plant. There are going to be some things as of October and November that we may, you know, need to have modified and we would reopen it at that time. But otherwise, it would, it would change the term of the agreement to, to three years. That's really the biggest thing.
I just had a quick question on this. Um, in terms of the turf field, when is that conversation going to take place with the town council? About who's going to um, help fund the, you know, the update and upkeep and.
So are we thinking, we're thinking specifically uh, turf field is what you're asking?
The high school, yes.
So um, the town uh, and the board staff had some basic conversations about it, but I, I would suggest that maybe um, you know, that you could reach out to uh, to the chair and see if you want to have a formal conversation between the, the parties. But right now, um, we have not, we do not have a, in my, to my knowledge, a date set to have that discussion yet, that that discussion is.
That's coming up. You know, we can't be sitting here with a million dollars of uh, this needs to be repaired. So.
Yeah.
That's just one of my first things that I had uh, when reviewing this, that was my thought of, okay, so when's that conversation taking place? Because like I said, that's, that's a big uh, that's a big expense.
Right, so uh, if you wanted to, you know, reach out to the town council chair and, and board and town council chair, I look to set some thing up where the parties, the boards talk about it, that may be a, a, a good way of moving forward with that. Um, I can talk to the town staff and, and I have. Um, yeah, you could also ask me to just continue that process and I could report back to you as a board on uh, you know, what I've gleaned from that. But we, we are at the point now where, you know, we're just basically agreeing to work collaboratively. That's what's in this document now, is just the agreement to work collaboratively to find an answer. And that's a big enough request that, that really is a capital request. The board cannot take out a loan. So there's no way for the board to do that really unless, you know, you literally put seven hundred thousand or eight hundred or a million in the budget for that purpose. Typically, something that big would be a loan.
I was just wondering, um, that was just kind of one of my first thoughts coming through this. Um, let's go to members, Jacob?
Uh, stealing uh, Rini and I, Rini and I's thunder, because you're gonna bring this up.
Sorry.
No, it's good. It's great. Um, yeah, you're right. It's a big uh, expense. Um, we talked about it a lot in FFC. Uh, I think it makes sense to go forward with the agreement at this time, um, because we just, you know, without it, things just don't get maintained. But um, at the FFC meeting, we felt that we might even want to introduce some sort of formal language and maybe the form of a motion, I believe, directing um, you to, to uh, open discussions with uh, the chair. With some sort of definite date, um, hopefully up in this fall, because it is coming up fast. And I think that if we keep kicking the can down the road, uh, we're gonna end up in quite a bit of trouble with this. Um, although we need to finish, finish it off and, and talk about that more.
Yeah, no, no problem. Um, go ahead, Rini.
So my big problem with this is that we signed this last year with the same discussion of, well, you know, the town and the board of ed are gonna work it out and it's seven hundred fifty million dollars. This turf field lasts for maybe ten to twelve years. We need to be more specific about what the plan is going forward. We, although I understand what Dr. Will is saying, that we cannot take out a loan, that is true. However, we could be including in our budget, some amount of money that we know will go to the ERC fund to help fund this when the bill comes due. The last thing that we want to do is take out a twenty-year bond for a field that lasts for ten to twelve years. You're only digging yourself an enormous hole and paying interest on things. We just really need to get with the town and say, okay, what portion are you covering? What portion are we covering? So that we know and can start the process of putting some money to the side so that when the repairs become needed, we have the money to do it and that we're being responsible around that. That is my biggest problem with this. I thought last year we had the same conversation and it was going to be addressed during the year. And we're some, kind of right back at the same place with the, well, you know, we'll get to that. We'll talk about it. There's a, you know, gentleman's agreement or some sort of thing. And, and I just feel like we need to really like, okay, let's, let's nail it down. What are we doing? That's my problem with, with this.
To be uh, to be clear, and I know that we talked in FFC a bit about it, um, and that ERF has talked about. The, what this agreement has us doing, eh, the, the board has complied with. So notice that what has been asked here is that it be identified and included in the capital improvement request, which it has. It was in the capital improvement request for the future. And then it's typically up to the town what it decides it wants to do with that capital request. Because items of that kind are done. To, to Ms. Beesaw's point, um, a funding mechanism for this going forward would be a smart thing to do. Whether that sits on the board side, under the ERF, or on the town side in some budget area, is probably the conversation. It's the elephant in the room, to be very frank, because there are people that did not want the turf field at this time. And so for instance, right now, your educational reserve fund can be used for technology, special education, or capital. But there will be many things that the board wants to do with respect to maybe technology or uh, special education. Maybe the maintenance of effort is going to come up in the, in some year and we'll need to pay that out, um, which could be four hundred thousand dollars by itself at some point. So um, the idea for some people, that a one million dollar capital expense would need to be paid through the board's educational reserve fund, um, could be a, a, a concept that they would struggle with. So that's, that's kind of why this is a, you know, it does need to have a discussion maybe between the two bodies to decide, you know, how to move forward. Um, because when it was decided, it did not have everyone agreeing that this was going to be a board thing at that time. So that's kind of the.
Doctor Will for saying that, I totally agree. And that's all I'm saying is that we just need to work out the details of it. Because I agree with you, that is a big expense for the board of ed to cover when we're struggling in other areas to just cover basic educational programs and things like that. So to the degree that we know what we're signing up for would be helpful.
Yep. Just quickly too, how come our pay-to-play part of that fee does not go somehow into, even a little small portion goes into something to go toward the field?
Well, so that's another tough thing sometimes to, to talk about without.
We can talk about it another time.
People riled up. But no, to, to direct answer is, we have one of the highest pay-to-play fees around. And parents who support sports in this town pay the majority of it themselves already. And our budget, instead of being, I'm just going to throw a number out there, but I would need to get, you know, accurate numbers before I throw anything, you know, against the wall that I want used anywhere. But I would say, let's just say, you know, 291,000 is budgeted, 400,000 is needed, and the parents make up the difference. There is no, say, additional monies to put towards anything in the current funding model now for pay-to-play because it's, it's funding sports as they exist. You know, it's.
Has nothing to do with the improvement along the way of.
Right, right. It's not capital improvements. It's a great question.
Usage of the fields. Like, do we collect anything for that?
The town has collected some for Yukon using it for, I can't remember what sport exactly, field hockey or something, but they're not getting a ton of revenue from that.
But does that go to something for this field?
Well, that would be a great question for the town. I, it's a town thing. They get the money in the town's budget for, for that use. Recreation, I think, is the, is the department. But again, you know, I, I think that probably it's not enough to, to make a dent at all in the, in the process, but I do think they collect some money. I don't think they have in a few years, though. I think COVID has interrupted any, any use of it for that purpose.
Yeah, but it's been here for a little bit. So, we could maybe have a little something instead of just nothing, a big goose egg. Um, let's continue on. Madu?
So, most of my questions and comments have been said by Jacob and Rini and yourself, frankly. So, I have very little to add to this other than, I, I mean, I agree that, you know, we really need to know what it is that we're getting into. I mean, we're going into, you know, like, we're already pre-investing in fiscal for fiscal year 22. And if we go into fiscal year 23, it's already going to look like we were asking for a huge increase. In addition to, now we've got to, you know, repair this field. So, it's going to look like our spending is out of control. Like, you know, I just, I, I, I would, I'd really like to know what it is that we're getting into. Because, you know, I mean, we can tell people all day long that, oh, hey, you know, the part of this increase is because of this, and this is what was scheduled for, but they're not going to care. They're just going to look at the bottom line increase. And that's all they're going to care about. You know, so that's, that's where I, I mean, I, I struggle with that. And, you know, I, I agree with Jacob and Rini.
Okay, guys, any other board members have anything to say before we do the motion on this? Jacob?
Yeah. So, just to go back to the original point, is, is it possible, Dr. Will, that when we move to approve this, we can add some sort of language directing some sort of meeting to occur? Or perhaps, Ashley, you could just verify that if we can, if you could send something up maybe with Tammy, let's see if we can get a joint meeting on the, on the books for the next couple of months. Is that possible?
I think we should have a joint meeting in regards to this. I already sent her the email about the COVID, which is on their agenda at some point. So, that's not necessarily a joint meeting, but this one, I think, would be a, a perfect joint meeting for all members of the Board of Ed and the Town Council to attend. So, we can cleverly, um, because like I said, that, that's a huge chunk of change that we're talking about. And we can't ignore it. And we can't just keep saying, oh, it looks so pretty, but we can't afford it. Doesn't do anyone any good.
Yeah.
So, I do agree that we need to take some steps in finding out how this is going to be paid for and gone through. So, I can, I can each send an email.
All right.
Okay.
If that's happening, I'm fine voting for it today. But I think we're all on the same page with that.
Yeah, I think everyone, like you said, this is our second time around reviewing this and nothing's changed in regards to that. And it's just kind of in here that we're both kind of going to maintain it. But who's going to pay for? So, not a problem. So, I will entertain the motion, though, to approve the agreement.
I can do it. I'll wait for Dr. Will.
Yeah, that's a rough one there.
All right, it works. I, Mari, I moved to approve the fields and grounds agreement as presented in the June 23, 2021 Board of Education meeting.
Hold a second.
Hey, any other further discussion? Okay, we can do a roll call vote. So, Jacob?
Hi.
Madu?
Hi.
Rini?
I.
I'm with you. I'm with you.
With the understanding that there will be a future meeting in the next couple of months to wrestle this part to the ground. That's.
That's my understanding.
That's missing for me. And that's why I don't want to vote yes for it unless it's yes with this caveat. I think that's where I'm having a trouble saying yes to this.
Okay, so do you want to rescind and?
Yes, I'll vote no.
Okay. Plord?
Nay.
Tony?
I agree with Rini. Nay.
Okay, Sophia?
I abstain.
You abstain? Okay. And Griffin? Join, nay. Okay, um, then I, I'm fine with having a nay as well. And then we could make a new motion as that one fails. So, Dr. Will.
I'm rewriting it, but I closed the Word document. I'm just gonna, so it'll take me one second. As presented, the June 23, 2020 meeting with the, with the modification that.
A joint meeting will take place in regards to the crazy turf field.
Can we put like a time limit on this? So.
I was gonna say. I was gonna say, let's, like, yes.
Drop dead.
Bye. Yeah.
Okay, what town do you guys want to put? Because we're coming into summer. There's vacations. So.
July 21st?
I, I would say by September.
September? September 1st? So, it makes it an August meeting? I see heads shaking. Yes.
Well, we do want the fields maintained. And so, this, this contract covers that the town, who's going to maintain it over that period of time. So, we do want that to happen. But to the.
Isn't our current agreement?
The rest of it taken care of. I think September makes sense.
Okay, so why don't we make sure that motion to approve the fields and ground agreement is presented in the June 20 meeting with the provision that a joint meeting will take place between the Board of Ed and Town Council to discuss the financial resolution to the artificial turf at the high school.
Now, the thing is, you can seek a meeting, but you don't, we don't have the authority to, to make it happen per se. You can seek it, you know?
We can't demand?
You cannot approve this. You cannot approve it. But I think you're seeking a joint meeting with the town council because if somebody said, no, we won't meet with you, you can't control whether they meet with you or not. You can't control whether you approve this or not. So, maybe seek a joint meeting?
With the stipulation that a joint meeting will occur by September 2021. And if it does not occur, therefore.
Therefore, rescinding.
Yeah.
Or agreement.
So, a joint meeting occurs by, by September 2021.
Yeah.
That way. And do you want to make it September or October? I don't know how many are around in, 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 in the summer.
Well, I think in between July and August, we should be able to find a date that we can get people together by September. You know what I mean? So, that gives us July and that gives us August.
Okay, so I think you've got.
How about, it's really that a joint meeting must occur by, at the must occur. That's more of my demand. I like that.
So, just to clarify, with this motion, if a meeting is denied, would we, would the, would we back out of the agreement? Is that what's being stated?
Well, what would happen here is if it doesn't occur, then you, you're actually rescinding your improvement.
Okay.
Your, your approval.
We'd have to go back to the table.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, guys, let's read this. Meeting is really must occur by September between the Board of Ed and. Okay, is everyone happy with this? Do I see smiling faces?
Yeah.
Happy as we're gonna be.
Better.
All right.
Okay, Griffin, I see a smile. I saw Sophia. Tony, you're like, really, really happy. Plord, we're good. We're good. Madu, I thought I saw a thumbs up from you. So, I thought we were good. Yeah, okay. Okay, everybody. So, I will entertain this exact motion.
Jacob Mari, I move to approve the fields and grounds agreement as presented in the June 23, 2021 meeting with the stipulation that a joint meeting must occur by September 2021 between the Board of Education and Town Council to discuss the financial resolution to the artificial turf field at the high school.
Tony, hold second.
Okay, any discussion on this? Let's do the roll call vote. So, Jacob?
Hi.
Madu?
Hi.
Rini?
Hi.
Oh, that was, that was better.
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
No smile. Do your smile. There you go. Sophia?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
I'm, I as well, therefore this motion that you wrote passes. And I will reach out and let her know that this is what we have decided by September, we will have a joint meeting.
Sorry.
Thank you, everybody. Okay. Okay, so now we are on to our next thing, which is the safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plans.
Yes.
Second read.
Right. So, the plan is online. It has been posted on the website. It's also currently in the left menu bar of the website. People can see it by, if you are able to access this, you know, the agenda electronically and you click on it, you'll get this site. It's right here on the left menu bar. And so, the update for tonight is the 6/23 update. So, I'm going to, now that we're, you're reviewing it, there really is not a tremendous amount of change. I did take in information that people suggested and so on and make some modifications. But essentially, you know, the difference is there is an added message to the superintendent and it was tweaking basic language elements of this. No one had a, a major objection to anything here. And most of the information in here, you know, does have the, the caveat that if the state guidance changes or if something is now going to be required of us, that then we would have to go with the state guidance or the guidance of the DPH. So, you know, these items are largely in compliance with the SER3 American Recovery or Rescue Plan. And in order for us to be eligible for the, the 500, roughly 400 to 500,000 dollars that the district would receive, I, I need to file this plan with the state tonight. But I wanted to make sure, you know, essentially, the requirement is that the public sees it. The public saw it on the 9th and the public is seeing it again. You know, between those two times on the site and is seeing it again officially with this board meeting tonight on the 23rd. So, we've, we've far exceeded the requirement that we put it out there to the public for people to provide some, from, you know, some response to. And tonight, you know, you're getting it as really a second look at the board meeting, but it has been up the entire time. So, you know, it is really a compliance document and it replaces the continuity of learning plan. That was 100 pages or more that we ended the year now and that plan becomes sort of archived. This plan now is put in place until we have more information. And so, you know, again, this is just your second read really officially as a board of this. It is posted online in two places and is a part of this agenda.
Okay, let's do any questions. I see Madu, you have your hand up?
Yeah, can you scroll to S1 dot 1? The email address there is incorrect. Yeah, it should be like at K12 and it just says 12. Only reason I know, S1 dot 1.
Oh, God, thanks.
Right there. It should be K12.
Yes, thank you. Let's see that.
Eagle eyes.
Hey, I read stuff.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does any other board member have a question before we do the, I mean, obviously, there's still discussion once we have the motion on the floor? Jacob?
Yeah, sorry, keep this, but since I wasn't here when we last discussed it. This is for SER3. We need to fill this out. So, is this, once it's created, it's, it's fairly flexible? Is that kind of what I'm understanding?
Yes, yes. And you're going to be, and it needs to be because the state, you know, is going to change. There are going to be things that come out this summer. Plus, this document is revisited, what is it, every six months? I'm trying to find that section.
Yeah.
So. So, you're gonna, the board's gonna have this, it's going to be posted, I'm sorry, for, for the public the whole time. But the board will officially have it put back in front of it this way. You know, every six months essentially for, for the next two years, actually. So, you know, there is an expectation that this will change to some extent.
They did ask that last time for, because it was six months and I think the way that he had to write it was that it can curtail, like, it goes with what the state has at the time. So, it's, because I said the same thing. I said, you know, during a six-month period, there is a lot of changes that occur. So, I don't want to be like a non-compliant during that time. So, that was, that was a discussion that we did have.
So, okay. Yeah, so even for likes, there are a couple of sections here that don't specifically reference the DPH or any group. Could those change between those six-month period? Like, I think there's one about like large events have to be held at the high school because they have that filtration. If they change that, could we, like, let's say they changed it in September, could we change that regulation?
Yeah, yeah, we can. I would just bring it to, to let you know, we're, we're modifying, you know, and, and there may be, you know, we, last year or this year that we just closed, we were required to have a pandemic plan, which we did. And it changed so many times because of the things that happened along the way. So, it is a living document, but we do need to submit what we know as of this moment in time to the, to the state through the ARP. And so, tonight, when we are done, whenever that is, I will make my last work item of the night, making sure that this is submitted under the appropriate area of the state's site. So, but yes, it will, it will change. Absolutely will change.
Okay. Yeah, it's almost like half, half an application and half our, our plan that we would create anyways to show what we're doing.
Yeah.
Okay, otherwise, I, I think it's good. I think the uses of the funds mainly to help the younger grades makes a lot of sense. And, and overall, I have no problem with it.
Thank you. I just realized, Madu, that you actually had your hand up first, but Jacob was in the first box. So.
No, you know what? I just forgot to take my hand down.
Oh.
Because I'd already spoken. So, I apologize.
Perfect. Okay, so at this time, I will entertain a motion, which is.
How about that?
Sure. I, Jacob Mari, I move to approve the town public school's safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan and approve its submission in compliance with the American Rescue Plan SER3 grant process.
Tony, hold second.
Hey, any further discussion? Yeah, let's do a roll call vote. So, Madu?
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
Plord?
Hi.
Rini?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
I'm, I as well, therefore it passes unanimously. So, Dr. Willett, sign this up.
All right, off it goes. Thanks. All right, off it goes. Thank you.
Okay, and now let's do the K5, I believe it is, that we have the end-of-the-year phase three document. Okay. I will entertain a motion. Do you have one written there? Yeah. That we're going to add, hold on, did he add? And we were gonna add about the COVID fund and if it wasn't, oh, this, you have it, okay.
Yeah, sorry. It's, it's, I don't know if you could see it, I highlighted it at the-
Yeah, no, I, I had to move my participation. I just saw the motion and I was like, wait a minute here, let me move my box over, okay.
Madhu Rendeshad motion that in the event of the Talon Town, Town of Talons Education Code Release Fund is discontinued. Any funds the BOE requested be rolled, rolled into the fund from fiscal 20-year, being said rolled into the Educational Reserve Fund.
Jacob Mari, second.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote. So Madhu?
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
Claude?
Hi.
Rini?
Hi.
Tony?
Nay.
Sophia?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
I'm a I as well, therefore, the motion passes. Okay. Let's go, we have the public participation. Comments are limited to two minutes, and it has to be about agenda items. If you could, please list your name and your address. And Tony will give you the 30-second visual and vocal to let you know you have 30 seconds left. So at this time, if the public would like to speak, please raise your hand or star nine. This would be a perfect time for crickets. Okay.
Really? No one?
Thank you. Thank you for that. We will move to points of information. Do any board members have any points of information they would like to add at this time? Madhu?
So, you know, I know we got a lot of questions about masks. I thought some of them would speak tonight, but, you know, we, we got your emails. We hear, we hear what you're saying. I, you know, I, I know that we have to follow, you know, Eastern Highland Health District and Department of Public Health guidelines. You know, I, I would encourage you, you know, we are, like, like we said earlier today, you know, we are gonna take it up in communications. I would still encourage you to write to your state representatives to let them know your feelings about that. But that's it.
Okay, Tony?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just want to tag in a, a bit on what Madhu was saying there. You know, we noticed today in the Policy Committee, we had a whole lot of people come listen to that committee. And I, I think largely that was due to the discussion of the masks. Unfortunately, we weren't able to have a public participation session during the committee. But I would, again, highly recommend if anybody that was listening had questions or concerns, either bring them up in public session here, or please feel free to write to the board and we will absolutely get back with you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. At this time, we will be entering into executive session for the purpose of the superintendent's evaluation. So I will entertain a motion for that, inviting Dr. Willett, because he has to be in there.
Jacob Mari, I move that the Board of Education moves into executive session for the purpose of discussing superintendent's evaluation while inviting Dr. Super, or Dr. Willett Superintendent.
This is super, starting off to a perfect start, super. Madhu, you seconded?
Yes, I did, yes.
Okay, any further discussion? We will do a roll call vote. So Tony? You're muted.
Hi.
Madhu?
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
Claude?
Hi.
Rini?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
I'm a I as well, therefore, we will start our executive session.
Okay.
No problem, because I mean, we did do the, we finished up the public participation and points of information already. We went through that. We don't really have anything future or the new business. So at this point, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Jacob Mari, I move that we adjourn the June 23 regular meeting at 10:10 PM.
Rini Beesaw, second.
Any discussion? Okay, at this time, we'll do a roll call vote. So Jacob?
Hi.
Claude?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Rini?
Hi.
Madhu?
Hi.
I'm a I as well, therefore, we will adjourn at 10:11.